At the official name? That's the official. Okay, it is five thirty and I want to call the Stevensville City Council into session. And we want to note that we have a couple of members who are absent tonight. Keep Carla and her family in your prayers, if you would. And so we'll first, we'll stand and do the pledge of allegiance. And Sherry, would you lead us in that pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state and God, one indivisible.
Okay Karen, you're in trouble. Welcome to the city council meeting tonight. I now call Kirk Plexo from the Church of Nazarene to listen to our invocation.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, for all that you've done for us. We thank you, Lord, for giving us a great city to live in and you've given us great responsibility to live up to. Lord, we know we can't do it without you and we know that these leaders, even to the best of their ability, can't do it without your wisdom and guidance, so we ask that you would give them that tonight. I pray that you would bless the citizens of Stevensville because of the faithfulness of its leaders. And so I just pray, God, that you would have your way in everything we say and do. Lord, we do bring those members that are not here tonight to you and ask, God, that you would bless them, their families, difficulties, any problems they may be going through. We ask that you would just help them right now. Again, thank you for the great city we live in and help us to remember that you are our Lord and our King. And if we'll keep our eyes on you, things will go well. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Citizen of general discussion, I have one item from Belinda Starnes, gonna make a presentation to us. And just before we get started, I want to just recognize somebody tonight. There's an article written in the paper. I'm glad you're, where is she? I'm glad you're all here. She was here a minute earlier. Sarah, where are you, Sarah? There you are. About this article, there is a, I'm gonna call her young lady, but I called her the other day and she laughed. And her name is Marguerite Reagan. She turned a hundred and four years old Monday. And if you haven't met her, go by Oakwood and visit with her. She'd love to talk to you. She's a great citizen. And just think about all the things that she's done and she's a hero, American hero. Because as I was talking to her about, what are some of the things you've done in your life? It turned out that she's a Rosie Riveter. How many of y'all remember what that is? And when I asked her, I said, well, tell me what that was. I mean, I think I know what it was. And I said, well, tell me about that. And she said, it's we ladies had to step up and do our part because the boys were overseas fighting our enemies. Great ladies. And I told her I'd mention her tonight, cause it's bedtime a little bit later. And I want to make sure she got early in the agenda and had that recognition. So Marguerite Reagan. Sarah, thanks for a good article. Thank you. General discussion.
Good evening. My name's Belinda Starnes and normally, most of you guys, especially Mr. Pendleton, see me with my closet nonprofit hat on. Tonight, however, we're here on behalf of Paws. Pets are worth saving and I'm sure all of you know and are familiar with Paws. And we are excited to bring to Stevensville for the very first time, a dog vet that we have at Wolfstock by Paws. Long-term goals Caitlin's going to share with us. However, overall, we think it's gonna be a great event. It's going to bring an immense amount of traffic into Stevensville. And so Caitlin would like to just briefly tell you guys just a little bit about.
So I'm Caitlin. The reason I get to talk about Wolfstock is because technically it was my idea. So I like to think that I'm the brains behind this if it's super successful and we really feel that it will be. And what we'll be doing is it will be an event in Wolfstock, obviously. The Woodstock of dogs is what we're having here at the city park. And it's going to be, you can bring your animals, which doesn't get to happen often unless you've come to the park on your own. You don't really get to bring them to much events. We're gonna have weenie races, depending on how many people sign up. We might have to make a bracket of weenie races. It just depends. We will have vendors, live music, and it will be from five o'clock to nine thirty PM, I believe. And so it's not an all-day event. It won't, you know, be an all-hot, being out there dealing with, I mean, it's just a very short event that we're hoping to raise a lot of money. One, we have to replenish our funds. We, medical costs for the dogs that we get, we get a lot of, they seem to be a lot of the ones that have the worst problems with them when we get them off the sides of the roads. And we don't have a building, we just have fosters, so the fosters care for these animals. And anyways, we have, we want to replenish our funds. But then we also wanted to come up with something that would benefit the community with, community to where annually, when we do this event, the money can go towards something that we've built. And so we are trying to build the first dog park here in Stevensville at the J.C. Park. And there's a big empty space and we already have some things drawn up, but we're making critiques on it. So that is going to happen. We just want to get the funds to be able to fully grasp the concept and have it at our event so that people can see where their money is going to, how it's gonna benefit. We're gonna have flyers for this Wolfstock event posted everywhere, different surrounding areas, counties. We're wanting it to benefit everyone around us. And so yeah, the major source of income that we can get will go towards this new dog park for hopefully everyone to, everyone to benefit from. And then Belinda's gonna talk about.
Actually, I think Caitlin did a great job. Caitlin's one of our new board members. She's young, she's full of energy. We are thrilled to have her on board with this fantastic idea. But overall, we're looking to add an event to Stevensville that the entire community and even surrounding communities can benefit from. And the one thing that when we've reached out to community members, we've asked, how can we help with your pets? The number one response has been a dog park. So therefore, we have absolutely had that in mind the full time. And that is our goal with this, is to get a dog park established for Stevensville.
And at this event, we will have multiple things for everybody to do. We'll have a kids' corner, so you know, bring the kids, bring the grandkids. Everybody will get to have something to do. Well, like I said, we're gonna have the little events, like little contests, as opposed to the weenie races, which I'm hoping will be like the big event of the night. But we also have the sheriff's office bringing in their dogs. And we'll have demos of how the sheriff's office gets to work their dogs. And they'll do demonstrations live for the public and their narcotics dog, their search dog. Like we have these things coming in and all of them have been really, you know, receptive to what we want them to do. And so everybody's on board and so we just really, really hope y'all will be too.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Mayor Protem, Brady Pendleton and I will challenge the rest of the council. And we'll get, the two of us will split a sponsorship for the, for the dog event, two hundred and fifty dollars. And we'll split that amount and encourage the other council members and people here tonight to do the same. So step up before they leave tonight.
Thank you so much for giving us just two or three minutes of your time. It means a lot to us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. If you want to know the different, like, if you want to sponsor an event and you want to know the different ones we'll have, let me know and I can tell you like individually, so you get to pick what you want to sponsor.
I'd encourage you to get with each of the council members personally after the meeting, by phone or in person. Thank you very much. It's a great, it's gonna be a great project. Thank you. Okay, to the regular dinner, item number two, we're gonna call Monica Harris to, I'm assuming that you just helped to talk about the proposed tax rate setting of time.
Mayor, council. We are required to set the date, time and place for our tax rates. And we have to do it no later than September first or the thirtieth day after the first date that we receive our certified appraisal rolls. So we've gonna set our tax rate, the current rate is point four eight cents per hundred. And the effective rate was point four five nine three per hundred. And the rollback rate was point five oh nine one per hundred. The debt rate was point oh three six six per hundred. And that's included in both the effective and the rollback rates. And so we'll just need a motion on what y'all want to have is the maximum. The thing to keep in mind, whatever rate we set today is the maximum. When you actually get to the hearings and the voting on the tax rate, you cannot go over that amount.
Okay. I think on item two, we need to set, have a motion, right, to pass that so we have the, set the date, the dates that we have set.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are August the twenty-third and August the twenty-eighth, Thursday and Tuesday, five thirty PM, in this chambers.
Mayor, I believe that we establish Thursday, August twenty-third at five thirty and Tuesday, August twenty-eighth at five thirty in the council chamber for public hearing on the tax rate.
Okay, Alan makes motion that we accept these dates as, dates and times as our hearing dates. And seconded by Mark. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, let's roll, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign of pose. Motion passes. Next item was the, the actual, the rates, tax rates. And so while we're at what tonight, what we need to do tonight then, Monica is, we need from, you need from us what?
You need to make the motion on what you're gonna set as the maximum tax rate. So whatever, we have the point four eight cents per hundred is what we have projected in the budget that we've presented to you. So it's just up to somebody to make a motion on what it is exactly that you want.
Mayor, I believe that we establish the maximum tax rate at point five oh nine one cents per hundred.
So what that does then, Monica, is just says that we won't go over that. But we'll come back and make a decision of what we're gonna do as part of the budget.
Yeah, you'll have the two hearings. And then whatever decision you make after listening to the budget workshops and the public hearings, then you can determine if you want that amount or an amount lesser.
Okay. Alan makes the motion that we set a maximum rate of point five oh nine one per hundred. Questions?
I guess second, I guess.
Have a second by Brady. Any other comments, questions? I want to make sure I understand, we're gonna come back and set the rate on the date, on those two dates.
Well, you'll have the two hearings. And then on September fourth is when we actually vote to pass the ordinance to set the rate, correct? I don't have my calendar in front of me, but I believe it was the September fourth date that you actually set the rate.
Okay, all we're just setting ourselves up so, not saying that's a bad word.
This is so that we comply, comply with the truth in taxation. So there's a lot of notifications and hurdles that we have to, to go through and hearings that we have to have so that the, the public understands what it is that you're, that we're doing.
Just want to make sure everybody understands, we're not voting on a tax rate tonight.
No.
We're setting a maximum for discussion.
Yeah, you're setting a maximum that you will not go over.
It's a not to exceed number.
Yes. Yes.
That's right.
You have a comment? Looks like you have it on the end of your tongue, right there, gonna roll off any second.
I mean, I, I don't know why we wouldn't just set the maximum at forty-eight cents rather than a rollback rate myself. I mean, that, that strictly limits what we can do. Because, I mean, we'd set it at the rollback rate, we could go to forty-nine cents or fifty cents even, so. The budget is prepared with forty-eight cents.
Is that what you, what your budget's based on, is forty-eight cents?
Yes, the one that we sent out the other day, whenever it was to you guys, has been based on the forty-eight cents.
Anybody else?
My reasoning for that would be, Mark, that it gives us the flexibility, if we choose to change the tax rate, we can go down from the forty-eight, we could go up to point five oh nine one. But that gives us the flexibility to do that. And by posting and publishing it this way, it gives us the ability, if we choose to do that, to do so at that particular time when we establish the tax rate.
Anybody else? Any other comments, questions? We'll have to have a roll call vote. Mr. McClinton?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Mr. Nix?
Yes.
Sherry? Sacker?
No.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, ayes, have it. One, two, three, four. Ayes, one, no. Ayes, have it. So we, we have set the maximum rate at fifty point nine one cents per hundred. Okay, next item on the agenda is, I guess, thank you, thank you Monica, anything else that we need to do? Okay. Next item on the agenda is understand, to approve a memorandum of agreement or understanding with Stevensville Independent School District. Jason? And I've already talked to Superintendent, he's already signed and we put in there, we doubled that rate. He said, I should've read the fine print.
You didn't read the fine print.
Not fine.
There you go. That's what Superintendent does.
Mayor, council. What we're coming to you this evening is, as part of the kind of ongoing continuing conversation about school security. The last few weeks, Superintendent Underwood reached out to me and wanted to know if it was possible to modify our arrangement and add an additional school resource officer and then perhaps start a school-based K-9 program in addition to the other K-9 program the department has. And so we've been going through those discussions and our staff has worked diligently and put a lot of information together in a hurry. And so we now kind of have that all packaged and what it looks like. We did go to the school board last Monday night and they have agreed to the memorandum of understanding that's, that's in front of you, that now the school district will fund two school resource officers. And then the addendum that's attached that adds a school-based K-9 that covers the, the dog for the school, the recurring cost for the dog, the vehicle modifications, all of those things. Our K-9, current K-9 handler and I traveled to Louisiana on Sunday and visited a facility down outside of Lafayette yesterday. And it is a first-rate facility. They do have a dog that's very suitable for the school environment, for what the superintendent's looking for. So if you approve the MOU tonight, then we'll start proceeding in a hurry because we, we need to get all this stuff done as, as quick as possible to get things ready for the beginning of the new school year. And I'll answer any questions anybody might have.
Matt, do you think, you want to address the council?
Well, we looked at obviously a lot of different options. We've had, I think, four or five school safety and security meetings with members of the community since the Parkland and then the Santa Fe incident. I'm sure you guys are well aware of that. We've talked about metal detectors. We've talked about some surveillance with high-tech type of cameras and motion detector cameras. We've looked at additional school resource officers. We've looked at them at every campus. But we think we've narrowed, any of the issues that we feel are a threat at this time would be more of a secondary level campus. So we're looking at, we have Henderson in high school now, right now, with one school resource officer. And now we would be able to put a school resource officer in both secondary campuses. Matter of fact, school board member last Monday night said, well, why don't we do two? And that's a, that's a great point because as far as efficiency with the, the tax dollar, a K-9 is really relatively inexpensive. You purchase the dog for about eighteen thousand and handling, you have some overtime with the, the school resource officer after hours. And then you have to feed the dog, but you're not paying the dog. There's also, there's also pieces that, 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 that will not allow kids to plan anything. We did like that. We thought if you set a set metal detector, you have to staff it. You still have other doors that are accessible, that you could open and let people in. Believe it or not, that does happen in Stevensville from time to time. But I, I think that was a big point to this, is the kid will never really understand where that dog will be in the building, whether it's coming in from the bus pickup or from the parking lot or from the athletic area, depending on where the kids are entering. We, we thought that, that element and having the dog there all the time not only deals with the, the issue of weapons, but now also we have an added piece of narcotics that is also nice to have in, in the school district. And I didn't really know, a lot of school districts that have done this, we kind of fumbled onto this idea. But then as we dug into it, we found out that Grandberry High School has had one for a while. So we think it's a, it's a good first step. There's obviously, we're still looking at some other options of what we're gonna do with school safety and security. But I, I can't say enough about your police department. They're top-notch. They've worked through and very quickly responded to our needs. And we're, we're just lucky to be in Stevensville with this, this high-quality police department.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody have any questions for Jason or for Matt?
I would like to thank Matt for y'all's work, you and the board, and try and establish a more secure environment for our kids to go to. It's sad that it's come to that, but that's where we are in this day and time. And I appreciate y'all recognizing that and being proactive and, and taking the steps that you've taken. And I know this is an ongoing process. I recognize that. But I want to thank you, personally thank you, for your interest and for your effort on, on all of our behalf because a simple community benefits all of us and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Yes, sir.
So Jason, is there some flexibility built into this memorandum that if the need were to arise in the larger community, that K-9 unit could be brought off the school campus?
No. And there's a reason for that. This dog is weapons, will be weapons-certified and narcotics-certified. That means it is basically only good for school use. It may be special events where weapons aren't allowed by law. It's not, because weapons aren't illegal in vehicles or on people's persons anymore, you can't use a weapons-certified dog out on the street. So it is, it is one hundred percent only for an environment where weapons are prohibited.
Is there, is there ever a time when the, the current K-9 unit would go to the schools to support there?
If, if that was something they needed for a particular event, there was a, in that case, it would have to be almost a narcotics issue at that point. But really, I don't envision that. I, I think the, the animal that we would purchase for the district is gonna be able to more than adequately handle any of those needs.
Thank you, chief. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
It's my understanding, chief, that this will be at no Z, or at zero cost to the citizens of Stevensville. Is that correct?
From, from the city side, yes, sir. It would be, everything is being reimbursed, all the cost, startup cost and the recurring cost are all being reimbursed by the school district.
They're borne by the school district a hundred percent?
Yes, yes, sir.
And that's, that's how our other resource officer is funded also, if I remember correctly?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, alright.
Okay, do I hear a motion then to approve the memorandum of understanding with Stevensville?
One move, sir.
Mark makes the motion and Alan seconds it. Any other comments? Hearing now, it will proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye. Same sign of pose. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Do you want to bunchy vote?
Thank you very much. Now, Matt, you know that he's gonna put all the overtime, police officers there on overtime up here. We're gonna figure out how to make the, no, it's part of the, it's just reimbursed them. Y'all, y'all a big check. Alright, thank you very much. Item number five, consider approval of developer agreement with Drini Real Estate.
The item you have in front of you is consider approval of development agreement with Drini Real Estate. And right after that, it'll be an advanced funding agreement with Tech Dot for the Christie Plaza traffic light. Staff, staff is seeking approval of a development agreement with Drini Real Estate and an advanced funding agreement with Tech Dot for the Christie Plaza signal light. If you can show that next slide, I think it's on there. One more, if you will, please. So that, that's the location of light. If you remember back in December of two thousand sixteen, city council, city council authorized a loan in the amount of forty-eight thousand five ninety between Nick Khalili and DBA, Drini Real Estate Investments, and Stevensville Type B Economic Development Authority for an economic development project at Christie Plaza by unanimous vote. The project authorized in December was for design of a traffic light at Christie Plaza. The light would foster development for an adjacent properties which included Panda Express and future Aldi site. In June two thousand eighteen, Panda had their grand opening of the new store at Christie Plaza intersection. Currently Aldi grocery store plans are, are under consideration based on this decision. There are two agreements for consideration. The first agreement is to consider approval for the development agreement with Drini Real Estate for the Christie Plaza traffic light. In the agreement, the developer agrees to pay for all onsite improvements needed for the construction along with payment to the city for construction of the light. Second agreement, authorize the city to enter an agreement with advanced funding agreement with Tech Dot. The city will pay for construction of light and then reimburse by Drini Real Estate Investments. Tech Dot does not enter into advanced funding agreements with private developers. Thus, that's why we're the, the pass-through on this. You have your alternatives. You can approve the both agreements, approve the agreements with modifications, deny the agreements or delay the decision until additional information is needed. You should also have both of those agreements in your packets. Hope you, if you have any questions, I can answer those.
Any questions?
Do you have a similar funding with the Site Felix light?
Almost identical, yes. That was with Tarleton. And the city had to sign that agreement with the AFA and with Tarleton on that, that particular one, too.
Yes, sir.
Is it my, is my understanding direct that the money for this project will be escrowed?
That's right.
So the city has virtually no risk. It's just a matter of the city needing to deal with Tech Stop for this particular operation.
That's a risk sometimes, but yes, that's right.
We are dealing with Tech Stop, whatever.
Yeah. We have done this similar project. We have been in contact with Tech Dot. I mean, we, we feel like we've, we've met with the developer, we've met with our engineer. So we feel like we have good communication going.
Sure.
I was just wondering on the loan from the EDC, did that get spent on the, is the engineering study done?
Yeah, that got covered. The engineering part got covered for the light. We, we have received those plans, we've looked over them. So that part, I believe, is, is completed unless there's additional that I know of.
And that loan was to be repaid through a different mechanism or is that money escrowed also to pay?
Well, as long as the light got completed, I, and this is the way I remember it, the way, as long as the light got completed, it was, it was, becomes a grant as long as that, that is completed, so.
I think that was, that was both my questions, yes.
Brandon, does he have a question?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, take these as one item at a time that, do I hear a motion to approve the developer agreement with Drini Real Estate?
One move, sir.
Second.
Mark makes the motion and Sherry seconds it. Any other comments, questions? Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign of pose. Motion passes. Next one is to, what this does is technically, we've already given city staff permission to do this once. Is that right, Alan? In the past?
Yes, sir. December of two thousand seventeen.
So we're bringing this back because it's connected back to five. And we're just gonna ask for the same. And we're just going to ask for the same thing while we're doing here is that get permitting staff to enter into the agreement.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, would we approve entering into the advanced funding agreement with Tech Dot as presented?
Second.
Mark makes the motion, Sherry seconds it. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Jeremy, appreciate it. Tourism Visor Bureau, where's Julie? There you are. Come on up.
We have a couple of applications. We have the Stevensville Lions Club Spooktacular Five K. They are asking for five hundred dollars for their race in October. We have Hugh Don White here to answer any questions you all might have.
You have any questions? There you go, Mark, come on.
On the application at the bottom that says how the fund will be spent, they indicate, and I assume these are Lions Club expenditures of money, but how will the five hundred dollars specifically be spent?
I think he's asking if it'll help with advertising or promotion of the race. I think you answered it like how Lions Club funds other activities, and I think specifically.
So, specifically, you're asking for the five hundred dollars to do advertising, promotion of the, of the race, is that what you're?
Part of it will go for that, part of it will go for other activities of the Lions Club in terms of nutrition enhancements and stuff. We have to advertise it, put up banners.
Okay, that's one need to do.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Any other questions? So, we have a request for hot funds for five hundred dollars to the Lions Club, we have our motion.
Mr. Mayor, would we approve the hot fund application to the Lions Club for their Spooktacular event?
Second. Brandon second, okay, Mark makes the motion, Brandon seconds it, to approve the five hundred dollars. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Next item.
We have a second application for the Texas Association of Nippon Kenpo. They have a championship meet this weekend at City Hall. It is, they're asking for five thousand dollars for their annual meet. We have Robbie Kunkel and his daughter Kitty, Kitty here to answer any questions y'all might have.
You have any questions? Go ahead, Mark. I saw it on the, you're telling.
Well, again, I'm going to, the, the, the event is this weekend?
It is this weekend.
And so, I, I would, I would simply ask what the money is specifically going to be spent for on this event?
We do social media blasts, we, we hire a guy that sends out the, the flyers and the information to try to bring people in from even other states and other areas to specifically target the martial arts community, people that would be interested in coming to our event. Obviously, every year I want to do this, I'm named at the Cowboy Capital because that's what I want to be known for. I mean, we're a part of the AOK, which is the oldest sport karate organization in the United States. And the largest is Texas-specific, so you can't be part of the United outside of Texas. But we do bring in the NASCA and the, the other competitors from the other events.
So, if, if the events this weekend, and I assume that you would use some of these funds for advertising, I mean, how are you going to incorporate the city of Stevensville information into advertising at this late date?
Well, I actually already have, I do.
Oh, you've given it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm very proud of my community, and so it's why I'm here.
Okay.
How much money have you spent advertising then?
Most of the invoices I get happen after the tournament because they know that my money comes in at the tournaments. So, gentlemen, I had better notes, but unfortunately, my storage building was robbed twenty nights, so.
Jason, where are you?
Mr. Mayor, can we have Mr. Kunkel?
Sure, come on up here, if you don't mind, a good, good idea.
I tried to go back into my older information to find some of that, so. Give me just a second, okay. So, I spent fifteen hundred dollars, these are approximate numbers, I don't have exact numbers because of losing my information, to Mr. Sutton last year for email blasts, radio ads, and those type of advertising things specifically targeting the martial arts community. I send out, I mail out to all the dojos and people that have been here before, the Stevensville Historical Interest Map, a map of Stevensville, so that they don't have a problem getting around. And then we have a list of the restaurants and hotels and try to encourage them then to spend their money here, obviously.
As well as attractions, local attractions, because a lot of them come in like the day before on a Friday. And so, we also include things for them to take their family to. We have people that come back for the Stevensville area because there's lots of different tournaments, but a lot of them hone in on this one because of the Stevensville area. And so, we try to really give back to that.
Did you get your question answered?
I've got one more.
Okay. Get after it.
So, have y'all ever requested money in the past for, for this event?
No, sir.
Because this is the first time?
Yes.
Any others? Any other questions? Sherry.
If this event is happening, how many registrants have you actually got for this event, for this weekend?
At this, at this time right, excuse me, at this time right now, our pre-registration numbers are about two hundred. We usually get about that many at the door. You know, I, I can't say how many we're going to get, but I'm hoping, I'm hopeful, so.
I, I guess, since we're at the close of a business day already, and we're looking at Wednesday, Thursday, maybe Friday, it seems, regrettably, I'm sorry, but it seems rather, basically not enough time to get things printed up or done for this.
Do you have a hotel room block for this? I know your application says a certain amount, but do we have a hotel room block that you've done?
You know, I'm kind of ignorant on that end of a lot of things. My daughters, of course, are going to help me next time. I do have, I always purchase five to six motel rooms myself for the people that come in and help and the events reg and some of my, my judges and dignitaries that are going to come down and help me put on the tournament. I've, in the past, I had sheets, I brought an example of what we usually do like this, where I have the people that sign up, kind of tell us where they're staying and, and comments and what their favorite restaurants and stuff, just to try to get information. That was unfortunately in the information, the boxes of stuff that were stolen from my storage building.
One of the, so, we're kind of, this is new-ish, I guess, still. So, some of the requirements are having a board, an organization, do you have that in place? A board, a board of directors?
We, we have a group that puts together like fundraising, if that's what you're getting at.
Or you set up as an organization?
Yes, actually, yes, Texas Association of Nippon Kenpo.
Yes.
That is our organization. I do have myself as president, I have vice presidents, I have a secretary and a treasurer, yes, I do.
It's like a five-on-one seat?
I, previously, we were always, we, we went through SPARD. This is our first year, we're not affiliated with, we're, I guess, I don't know, I'm not sure how the affiliation that we have with SPARD. The gentleman that was the director of SPARD was telling me we would still be affiliated, but I never really got a close idea of what that is. So, I'm, I do not have any type of nonprofit status or registration or anything.
Okay.
Anybody else? Do I hear a motion?
Is this going to fall under the category of a sporting event? I'm a little confused, and I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm honestly not sure if they qualify or not, but if, if it's going to come under sporting event?
I'm not sure they qualify because they don't have a board, they don't have a board set up and a legal entity.
Address on this.
In our policies that we set up, it, it lists that an organization be an, an official entity, nonprofit or organization. And I'm not sure that this is the case.
So, only a nonprofit can?
Or an entity or organization is the way the policy reads.
What would that mean, or define that?
PBA would be an organization that's not a nonprofit, that would be an organization that would qualify as something called a nonprofit.
Under eligibility.
Some other stuff like that.
It must be an organization, nonprofit or entity, must be someone legally able to enter into a contract with the city for this.
So, likely needing a board of some kind authorizing a signatory to do.
I've got another question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Rodney, your application, I mean, as far as hotel room concern, I mean, you have a pretty large number of people staying. So, at this point, you said you got two hundred people pre-registered. How many of those do you think are local folks that will not be staying in hotels?
The local people do we have? There's thirty-three.
Okay, so, are any of those safe to say folk come from out of town? Another hundred and seventy or so out of town folks, so we don't know.
They're from Abilene, Midland, Odessa, yes, sir.
So, I mean, let's say, third of those people maybe are going to get hotels here for at least one night.
Yes, at least.
So, we're down to forty or so people, I mean, so.
At least, we've, with the stuff that I had, I was going to tell you, we always have a hundred, a hundred and fifty. Most of the time.
Hotels booked or people staying in hotels?
People staying in hotels here in this area. We always have overflows, during that weekend, for some reason, they, they fill up. And so, I get these people telling me, and I wish we had more rooms here. So, I know we're bringing people here, I know they're staying.
Well, like I said, and, and if, if these are, in my opinion, if these really are the number of hotels that are being booked by your event, I encourage you for next year to keep an active record, hoping nobody else breaks into your storage shed again and steal those records. Because, I mean, anytime we have an event that's bringing in this number of people to fill this many hotel rooms, I mean, that is an event that warrants full consideration, in my opinion.
Yes, sir.
And so, bear with us, because like we said, we're still trying to learn the process. But nonetheless, I think for today, I'm, I'm all about, I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion to award you the fifteen hundred dollars to pay the fees for the guy that you paid last time, hoping his fees are the same, in hopes that next year you can bring the documentation forward and prove that this many people are coming. Because if it is, then maybe you warrant more money, I don't know. But I mean, anytime we can have an event that books all the hotels in Stevensville, that's the whole point of what we're trying to accomplish up here.
Yes, sir.
For sure, so.
And we're going to move to electronic, I'll be in charge of that.
Fantastic, so it'll be a lot easier.
We won't have this issue.
So, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve funding the, oh, I'm going to try to pronounce it all, association for fifteen hundred dollars.
Brady makes motion, we modify the request fifteen hundred dollars. We are second.
I'll second.
Mark seconds the motion, any other comments? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
No.
Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Brady?
Aye.
Alan?
No.
Sherry?
No.
Brandon?
No.
Okay. Alright, so, motion fails, two ayes, excuse me, two ayes, three noes. Work with Julie next time on your present, on your actual application. Okay, next item is planning a zoning commission. And we'll get Jeremy up here, we're going, we have a couple of agenda items that are, have been pulled. Case, item number one and two have been removed from the agenda. And items three, four and five were also pulled from the agenda. So, we'll start with item seven. And I, do you want me to go ahead and make the, make my comment now, Jeremy, or you make your report first?
He's the mayor, if you want to do that, you can.
Let's do it this way, how about that? We're going to try, we're going to, with some suggestion, how we're going to bring this up. We're going to have a public hearing in a moment. And we're going to address all items seven through thirteen at one time. Let me read to you the verbiage here. At this time, we'll open a public hearing for cases AZ, or ZA, I've got a dyslexia here, twenty eighteen oh oh three through cases AZ, twenty eighteen zero zero nine, which are items seven through thirteen on your agenda, cases ZA two eighteen and zero three, zero three through ZA twenty-one eighteen zero zero seven, amend the zoning ordinance to allow restaurant and alcoholic beverage service as permitted use in neighborhood businesses, retail and commercial, central business, industrial and downtown district. Case ZA twenty eighteen zero zero eight repeals the restaurant with alcoholic beverage service as a, as a conditional use. And case ZA twenty eighteen zero zero nine repeals section six point five restaurant with alcoholic beverage service in the zoning ordinance. The public can speak in favor or against one or all of these items at the same time. And we're going to go to a report and let Jeremy make a report. And then we'll have, entertain public comments.
Just a little bit of background, so currently restaurants are permitted in uses in B one, B two, B three and industrial. Restaurants with alcohol beverages are only allowed in B five. The B five district is intended to provide restaurants which provide on-premise consumption of alcohol. According to the Texas Administrative Code, refers to section one oh nine point five seven. Application of the code to other jurisdictions, except as expressly authorized by this code, a regulation charter ordinance promulgated by a government entity of this state may not impose stricter standards on premises or businesses required to have a license or permit under this code than are imposed on similar premises or businesses that are not required to have such a license or permit. It is the intent of the legislation that this code shall exclusively govern the regulation of alcoholic beverages in this state and that except as permitted by this code, a government entity of this state may not discriminate against a business holding a license or permit under this code. Amending the zoning ordinance and repealing B five zone will allow the city to align with the Texas code. The process will allow for a more efficient development process for restaurants with alcoholic beverages. Private clubs will still be allowed through, only through B four private club designation with approval of council. No changes are proposed for private club zoning. So, long and short of it, we're, we're trying to meet the, the state code on this. We should not be treating restaurants and restaurants with alcohol different. The state reserves that right to regulate alcohol with these businesses.
Okay. The public can now come and speak in favor or against all the items at this time. Anybody want to come make a public comment?
We're not.
You're not the public? Hearing none, and I'll close the public hearing. And we're going to address this similar to the way we do, similarly to the way that we do the consent agenda. And so, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to recommend to council to approve or deny cases ZA twenty eighteen zero zero three through ZA twenty eighteen zero zero nine to amend the zoning ordinance and allow for restaurant without alcoholic beverage service as a permitted use in neighborhood business, retail and commercial, central business, industrial and downtown district, as well as to repeal the restaurant and alcohol beverage service as a conditional use. Repeal section six point five restaurant and alcohol beverage service in the zoning ordinance. So, I'll take a motion. However, if there's any council member that wants to pull any particular item off and address that specifically, we can do that this time. If not, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Brady makes the motion that we approve the items, I'm going to say it this way, items seven through thirteen. And Sherry second that? Okay, any other comments?
Quick question, if I may, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
How, how this get brought to our attention? Why now?
Our building official brought it to our attention when we, it first came through when we were looking at the, the Japanese restaurant. That was one of them, that was a restaurant with alcohol. And they, they had questioned it, why we were treating them, why we had, they had to go through some different hoops. So, I started looking into the, the state law. Our building official also suggested he went through the same process in his previous city and suggested that we look into it. That's what started it.
Okay. Mr. Texas.
I've got several concerns about this, Mayor. And one of them is a continuing, I believe, effort by the state to usurp the local authority of the city. The problem I have with this is the citizens of the city of Stevensville have no contact with the majority of the state representatives who established this law. The problem I have with this is the citizens of the city of Stevieville have no contact with the majority of the state representatives who established this law. And I'm not faulting Jeremy for this, but I'm saying that the local control over issues like this should remain in the hands of the local people. Because if they have a question or a comment or an issue with it, we are the ones that they're gonna call, probably not the state. And simply qualifying for a permit from the TABC shouldn't qualify them to do this, in my opinion. Because the local citizens who elect us should have the authority to do that through us, their elected representatives. And it troubles me that we give up rights like this because I know, once they're gone, we'll never regain them. And there's been threats of lawsuits, there have been lawsuits, and we were successful in defending our position because zoning is subjective. And I think that's what the citizens elect us to do, is to determine appropriate and inappropriate places for these things to be taking place. And again, Jeremy, I'm not fault in you, but I just find it, again, I find it troubling that we are losing little by little what authority we have to be self-governing and self-determining in our own community.
Maybe what we should do, Mr. Nix, is put that on our agenda from our, what's the committee that writes it? Nominations Committee, and make recommendations to our state legislator to address that issue. And at least if nothing else, maybe we could have staff write a report and ask him to read it for the State Assembly.
I would welcome that, but that won't solve this issue.
It won't, other than a little commiseration.
And with all due respect to our legislators, once they have authority in their hand, they're very unwilling to relinquish it.
Well, they do put a lot of rules on us that they don't put on themselves.
Absolutely. And that, and that bothers me also. That's why I can't support this.
Other comments, questions?
Jeremy, you and I've talked about this. So if a restaurant is not a permitted use in any one of these zoning districts, this is, it's a moot issue, right?
Right. So if there is a particular neighborhood, B one, that, or B two, whatever that zone is industrial, that you didn't wanna have a restaurant with alcohol in, for whatever reason, you would need to remove restaurant from the permitted use as well, because you can't treat restaurant and restaurant with alcohol differently. So, in a particular neighborhood, if you, you know, if you, neighborhood business, for example, if there was one in there that you didn't want a restaurant with alcohol in because it's too close to a neighborhood, then you could, you could restrict the use of a restaurant in there as well.
Well, I've had a couple of people that've talked to me about this, and that's, their concern is all, has all been about B one, the residential business district. And, you know, I don't know that it wouldn't be prudent to have the commissioners at P and Z take a look at that specifically. Whether or not restaurants should be a permitted use in the residential business districts at all. Because their concern was, well, if there's a house, somebody puts a restaurant in, it's right next to my house, what's, you know, what's up with that? I mean, I don't know, I just.
Probably have to change the zoning in that case would be my first thought, but if they put it in a residential house, that would be.
But if the residential, but what I'm saying is, if the B one backed up to a residential area, you know, similar to the bus depot down here that we did, you know, backed up on two sides where residences to it. And so it's, it's actually zone B one, but, or that, I think, was downtown. But it doesn't matter, it backs up to a residential. And there are business B one lots that do the same thing, you know, back right up to neighborhoods. So you wouldn't have to change the zoning for that house, it's already B one. But if you didn't permit a restaurant in, in that B one zoning, then it's a moot issue. You couldn't have a restaurant or a restaurant with alcohol.
Yeah, that sounds right. I didn't think of that. So understandable. What's your remedy?
Remove restaurants from B one zone?
Remove restaurants from B one zone.
And you're gonna talk to all the B one people that want it?
No. What I'm suggesting is we take it and let the commissioners at P and Z take a look at it. That's what I'm suggesting.
I'm backing out of it. I shouldn't have been talking with them.
I think I can relay that to P and Z. We can look at that. I mean, what, what you're saying is, if we don't want alcohol, restaurant with alcohol beverages in that zone, we need to look at, see if the restaurants in that zone is a good fit as well. And so, and then we can decide to pull both of them or leave them both.
You just made a good case for my point, that that's something that we should be able to determine. A restaurant might be a feeding application of that property, but not when you add alcohol to it. You just made a good case for me. Thank you.
Well, and I'll just add this, you know, TABC has, has a waiting period and you usually have to post your notice on there. So during that period, if you're in a situation where you don't think alcohol is a good thing, you can talk to the TABC and voice your concerns, and they may or may not approve that permit. So there is a little, we do have a little bit of recourse in that side to talk to TABC. I have looked at that process, and I don't know how many people are successful with that, but there is a process. If enough people voice their opinion during that waiting period, that they may deny a permit for that, so.
Any point of order? In this case, what we're asked, what we have a motion and a second on the floor, is to approve the ordinance that was recommended. And we could pass that tonight and still ask P and Z to address it.
Sure.
So we can come back and ask P and Z to address that issue then?
Yes.
Okay.
You said amend ordinance.
Correct. Accordingly, we had no choice.
Yes, we do.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor. Any other questions? Start, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Roll call. Mark? Mark's no. Brady?
Aye.
Okay.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes three two. And we'll instruct staff to send this to Jeremy. Take it to P and Z. Okay. Planning Development Committee report. Brandon? You gotta reprieve, I mean, my gracious.
All right. The Planning and Development Committee met on July the seventeenth and discussed several things on the agenda. Jeremy, would you like to come up here? The first thing we consider was amendment to our sign ordinance, changed some language from back to the way that it was intended. It was an oversight, and the committee recommended that amendment to full council to make that change. For signs to maintain eight-foot clearance instead of fifteen, so am I missing anything?
For a pole sign.
For a pole sign.
That was the way it used to be handled when we updated the sign ordinance. We, we changed it, we used a bigger city as an example for that one, and we should've kept to what our values are when it comes to signs. And so moving it back to an eight-foot is what our sign companies suggested, and some of the businesses that were looking at signs. So that's what we're, we listen to people, I guess.
So it'd be, you're requesting an amendment to ordinance twenty eighteen, what is it, zero what?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six? Any questions, Jeremy or other committee? Hearing now, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Next item.
Second item we decided, we discussed was, staff presented an ordinance to address carports with variances. Board of Adjustments gets overloaded with these sometimes. We tried to streamline this process for citizens. And we made, made the recommendation to full council to change this ordinance and with some amended signs, amended sizes, for it to be granted without having to go to the Board of Adjustments if they hit certain criteria, so.
Quick summary with that, just to give my take on it. We, we will still have to notify all the surrounding property owners, and if there is more than thirty-five percent of the property owners that contest the variance, then we will take it to Board of Adjustment for approval or denial of that. When looking at the ordinance, the committee did, did recognize that twenty by twenty-five on that variance process may, may not be appropriate. So they, they increased the size from to twenty-five, or recommended an increase in size to twenty-five by thirty.
Any questions for the committee or staff? Hearing now, do I hear a motion? What's the ordinance gonna be?
Number twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Brandon makes motion, we approve ordinance number twenty eighteen oh twenty-eight. Here, a second. Sherry, do you second it? Sherry seconded the motion. Any other questions, comments? Hearing now, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Next item.
Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Next item.
Okay. Next item we discussed was consideration of, to make some changes to our wireless communication facilities. Had some, some things pop up with that. Steph recommended adding a thousand-foot buffer to any residential properties without a special exception. The committee moved to make this a five-hundred-foot buffer and advance it to the council.
So in my, my experience, been very rare that we've seen wireless communication towers. You know, there's, of course, everybody knows of some of our communication issues. We did have a case that went to Board of Adjustment, you know, and an oversight on our part is that it was very close to a residential property. So this buffer would hopefully keep separation away from the residential properties.
Any other questions?
Jeremy, what was the thought process behind removing that from strictly industrial to any other business zonings?
Well, we looked at some sample, some other ordinances. And if you look at the industrial properties and what we did with this particular ordinance and the buffer, there isn't any much difference when it comes to commercial properties versus industrial. So if you go into some of the industrial properties in the middle of the city, they're surrounded by residential properties as well. So as far as the mix between residential and, between industrial and residential, and then the commercial and residential, you know, we were just looking at trying to make it easier to be able to put up one of these towers when we looked at it.
Do you know the percentages of industrial versus the other business properties?
Versus, commercial versus industrial? Oh, there's a lot less industrial, but I don't have the number on top of my head in the city. I mean, there's more industrial on the outskirts of the city. I know that didn't help you, but I don't have that number.
Of course, my thought is, I really don't want these springing up everywhere. And I think that was an oversight on the council's part to change that. The industrial district is, is not as wide spread. And I think that that would help limit some of this, and that may not be good for the communication people, but it's not good when you look out your door in both directions and see one either. That's my opinion. I think that may have been a mistake on our part to change that.
I, I think it's a balance act. To me, we don't want these popping up everywhere, but we're growing as a community, so these communications, if you have AT&T, you know how communications are. So at least if we add this buffer for the residential part of it, which was the biggest issue with the last one we had, we would help that.
I think what was very interesting is our P and Z, they, they asked staff to bring in some people to help look at this ordinance when we did. And it was very grateful that we did, because we had some comments, and that comment that we originally, there was originally like a thousand-foot buffer between each communication tower. You know, Stevieville, that really widens it out. And one of the particular persons that owns a business said that, you know, the market's gonna kinda dictate that. You're not gonna get a whole bunch of these things. You're gonna get, you know, the market's only gonna allow for one or two of them. So according to our experts, I don't think we have a fear of these things popping up everywhere. We might get one or two. And so hopefully, they're not gonna be around residential areas, but more in a commercial or industrial use area, so.
Any questions, comments? Ordinance, Stacy, is which?
Number twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Do I hear a motion?
Move we approve ordinance twenty-seven.
Brady makes motion, we approve ordinance. Mark, second. Any other comments? Hearing now, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Was there another item?
Another item? The item was put on the agenda to discuss the direction the city has taken on billboards. And some, some good discussion came about. We've had an abundance of these pop up since with the change with the sign ordinance in January. And we really didn't have much in there restricting them from being anywhere based on any kind of, you know, value, property, property value, stuff like that. So we asked the staff to come back and give us some more items that could be added to that ordinance for the Board of Adjustments to use in making those decisions. And they came back with six of them, and I'll kinda let Jeremy go from there.
Yeah, we, we heard the first few of our billboard cases at Board of Adjustment, and, you know, the board's concern was that they didn't really have criteria or guidance on which way we want the council, their vision for these billboards were. And so as we went to the committee, we, we added these six as, that will be considered when granting a special exception. So the effect on public health and safety and welfare for the citizens, the effective value of the surrounding property, the potential for interference with enjoyment and use of surrounding properties, the aesthetics, the necessity of special exception for public health, safety and welfare of the citizens for the government purposes, and then the zoning districts and adjoining zoning districts of the property for which the special exception is sought. And if you'll look, these are very similar to what we're doing with the communication towers. And so I'll entertain any questions you have for those.
Had the Board of Adjustments look at the changes you made, the recommendations?
They have not seen these, I don't believe. We, I've given, we have three on the agenda for Thursday. We, I've given them some guidance that we have in the sign ordinance regarding variances, but they're still very, still broad. So they haven't seen the new, these here yet, but they have seen these when it comes to communication towers. And they, I, I won't speak for them, but I, it was easier for them to make a decision on those.
I think this will add a lot of clarification for Board of Adjustments to make a decision, and something to stand behind if they decide that it's not a good spot for one.
Questions? Any questions, comments?
Will these be applicable to the cases that they will hear Thursday since?
No, sir. I've been advised by our attorney that the cases that they, and you can, you can lawyer this conversation up anytime you want, Randy. That they applied under certain guidelines, that those are the way that those cases should be heard. Any new cases after this is passed that are, that have an application, it will be heard the new way.
Some existing applications will be considered without these items or guidelines being considered?
I told Randy I wouldn't pawn anything off on them, but Randy?
Some of these are duplication, in my opinion. When we speak about public health, safety and welfare, that was in the old divisions. To me, that's the ba, that's the basics. I think what happened here is that the Board of Adjustment this morning felt like they had to have some more guidance. I didn't necessarily think they had to, but I don't think it hurt anybody when I was asking about it. So what I'm telling you is, I think we're legally gonna be judged the same way by applications in either, either before or after.
Any questions, comments? Stacy, ordinance, will it number which?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance number twenty eighteen oh twenty-nine?
Make a motion.
Second.
Brandon makes a motion, Brady seconds it. Any other question? Hearing now, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Mr. Nix, Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Committee met, we had several items to discuss. The first item was a contract amendment with CH two M Phil OMI for the operation of our wastewater treatment plant. This is an annual consideration that is a part of the contract that we have with them. Each year, they come back to us and bring to us. Each year they come back to us and bring to us justification for a cost of living or whatever you want to call it, a CPI increase in the cost of operating the plant. The, the chemical and sledge hauling costs have remained the same for several years, and they project that to be the same for this year. The, the cost of operation, the, the recommendation of the committee is to increase that by three percent. The formula that they used came back, I think, with about a four and a half percent increase because of their willingness to work with us and because of Mr. Williams' section of ordinance deals. Well, we were able to get a three percent increase on that. And this, this is a, a part of the contract that we negotiate with them each year, and it's an ongoing thing. But they have done an exemplary job of maintaining and operating our facility for us. This comes with a unanimous recommendation from the committee, and I would like to motion to approve the contract amendment with OMI for the operation of the wastewater treatment plant.
Alan makes a motion to approve, uh, the contract amendment with, I won't repeat all that again, for the waste treatment plant. Mark, did you second that? Any other comments? Hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. Mr. Nix?
Mayor, I failed to mention that Johnny Davis is here, who, who is our plant operator, and I, I should have mentioned him sooner. But he's, he's a regular at our council meetings, and he does a good job of operating and taking care of the facility and the personnel out there. Thank you, sir. Next item, we discussed the, the qualifications for ranking for water well field development project, only five hundred and thirty-six acres. Staff is currently working. It was the, uh, the, the feeling of the, of the committee, that the recommendation that they had to go ahead with Park Hill Smith and Cooper for the development of this well field, and they are currently in negotiations with them. The next item was for the qualifications for ranking of the master utility infrastructure management plan. Also, the committee felt like that staff's recommendation for Freezing Nichols was the, the right recommendation to put them in place to do this for us. I believe staff is currently negotiating that contract also. The next item is also an item that we discussed at the committee. There, there may be funding available because of some of the disaster relief funds that will funnel through the state to us possibly. The, the staff presented to us at that time a contract for public management and KSA Engineering to provide grant administration and the associated engineering services for the general land office, community development block, grant application. One of the important things to this in my mind was that there will be no expense to the city if they are not successful at securing some of the funding for the city to use. And then if my memory is correct, both of them will be paid on a sliding scale based on what they are able to secure for the city, if they secure any funding. So it's basically a, a win-win situation for the city. We have people working for us in an attempt to secure funding. If they do, they will be paid from that funding with a minimal amount of expense to the city. If they don't, if they aren't successful, the city will be out nothing, and they will do what they can to secure that because it is obviously in their best interest also. The committee recommended that. We engage Public Management, Inc., uh, to do the grant administration and KSA Engineering, to do the engineering. And we, we may need to handle both separately, don't we?
We will handle both individually.
Okay, well, my, my first motion would be to approve the contract with Public Management for the grant administration services.
Alan makes a motion, Mark seconds it. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor for approving the contract with Public Management, Inc. Say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. The next, I'm sorry.
My second motion would be to also approve a contract with KSA Engineering for the engineering services. Should Public Management be successful, they will help design whatever project we determine we need to do. And that would be my second motion to approve that contract with them.
Alan makes a motion, Mark seconds it. Any questions, comments? Proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes.
Mayor, that is the end of the Public Works Committee report.
Good job, Mr. Nix. Mr. McClinton, Finance Committee report.
Finance Committee met July seventeen, all members were present. On our on the agenda to talk about the fourth quarter amendments for the fiscal year ending September thirty. And I'm going to invite Monica to come up and give us any highlights she feels we need to know.
Mayor, Council, um, these budget adjustments will be for our fourth quarter. And, um, a lot of the stuff in there is basically a net zero. But we did have a few things that were going to dip into our reserves. So the overall reserves will be dipped into by sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The general fund reserve would be reduced by fifty-six thousand three hundred and forty-eight. The airport reserve would be reduced by one thousand three hundred and eighty-seven. And the court technology fund reserve would be reduced by eleven thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Are there any other questions?
Any questions? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-eighteen oh?
Thirty.
Thirty. Is the fourth quarter budget adjustments.
Brandon's motion, and Alan seconds it. To approve the fourth quarter budget adjustments. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Thank you, but motion passes. To Monica, you're up. Monthly budget report.
So we've looked at the financial statements that are ending June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. We're nine months into the, the fiscal year, so our target percentage would be seventy-five percent. And we're still moving on the, the path that, you know, we had budgeted for. So our, our property tax, um, we received twenty-seven thousand in property taxes for June. And, uh, that's resulted in five hundred and twenty-five thousand over the funds that were collected through June thirtieth of last year, which is what we anticipated, uh, when we set our, our tax rate. The county normally collects about ninety-nine percent of the property taxes, um, through June. And this year we're at point six-one percent above our budget, so. The sales taxes, we received five hundred and twenty-seven thousand in sales tax in June, which is twen- two hundred and nineteen thousand over our target budget through June thirtieth. Um, we've received two hundred and twenty-one thousand or five point one percent more than last year. For the hot funds, we received two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty-three thousand in hotel occupancy taxes through June as compared to two hundred and thirty-nine thousand last year, so we're up a little bit. And we spent two hundred and forty thousand in hotel occupancy taxes through June as compared to the two hundred and seventy-eight thousand last year. So even with setting up the new visitors bureau, we're a little bit under. The target budget for operating revenue is seventeen point eight million, and we've received nineteen point seven million, resulting in one point nine million over budget. This is a big result of the property taxes, which were billed in October and due by January thirty-first, as well as our sales taxes and some of our other taxes. The target budget for operating expenditures is fourteen point six million. We've expended thirteen point two million, resulting in one point three million under budget. The operating revenue received last year was nineteen million as compared to the current year's nineteen point seven million, resulting in seven hundred and twenty-five thousand increase, and that's due to our property taxes and our sales taxes. The operating expenditures last year were thirteen point eight million as compared to the current year's thirteen point two million, resulting in five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar decrease. We have spent six hundred and ninety thousand three hundred and eleven dollars of the eight hundred and seventy-five thousand budgeted for our street pavement maintenance as of June thirtieth. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Monica? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the financial report? Mark makes a motion, we, we approve it, and Brandon seconds it. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Thank you for your report, Monica. Okay, Stevensville Economic Type B Development Authority update, Mr. Sanford. Big for email today, by the way.
All right, Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you guys so much. This is kind of exciting. First time I get to, uh, be in front of you in this role, so I'm excited to be able to be here.
Everybody put your guns down.
Yeah, I know, tell me about it, really. No, I am excited to be here, and I, I would love to take what Monica just gave as the, with all the increases in taxes and take full credit. Obviously, that's not the case, but we are certainly excited about where that trend is going. I think that's a good sign for us. Before I kind of get going with the report, I did want to set the stage a bit. You know, for many of you, and I've met with virtually all of you and, and many of the folks in our audience as well and, and others that we're trying to, you know, I'm on a listening tour right now. I'm listening to a lot of people, trying to figure out where we are. As many of you know, I was here twelve years ago and, and the five years prior to that in a different role. Very excited to be back, uh, just to kind of set the stage. We're back, you know, I've got blisters on my hands from doing yard work. Where the kids are getting ready for school. They're, uh, oh, by the way, I, this is probably completely inappropriate, but I do have a fundraiser for my son's soccer team, if anybody would like to partake. Uh, it's an Orca cooler, ten dollars per or three for, okay, nevermind. But I guess that's just part of this process, we're here. My wife is taking morning walks with her friends that she's had for fifteen years already, from neighborhood to neighborhood. I say all this because we are now here, and we're excited to be here. And I am approaching what we do at SEDA, and I'm instructing staff and even hoping to lead the board and others in a way that says, this is our community. This is not a job. This is not just a task that we do once a month or whenever, that this is a passion for us. We, we go to church here, we go to soccer games here, whatever else we go to. Uh, we're, we're, we're fully involved. We're involved with the schools and volunteerism. I think we've already been rounded up to do, uh, volunteer duty on two or three events coming up very quickly. This is where we are as a family, this is where we are as an organization. We're doing this because it matters to each and every one of us, all of you up there, not just because you have the oversight role, but because you're also citizens, and not, and same goes for us. So I'm very excited to be able to come here and tell you that we're on the road, we're getting some things going. Uh, one of the first things that we're doing and that I'm hearing from folks as I'm going on this listening tour is that we need to be the repository for data. We need to be able to take the kinds of information that is out there already and have that stored in our, uh, offices and be able to utilize that for the development of new businesses and expansion for the existing ones. We also need to be able to find out what other data is out there so that we can collect those and again, be the repository, so we can be that one-stop shop along with the city and being able to take that information and getting it out to the appropriate people. So we've been doing that. We've been finding out or utilizing the resources that we already had. And also finding out, quite frankly, that some of the resources we weren't using to the full extent that they could be used. And you don't know that until you dig in a little bit. So we're taking some of the tools already in place and looking at other tools that perhaps we can, uh, move towards down the road and utilizing those to find true data points for our community and find out exactly what it is and who we are and where they're coming from and all of the other different kinds of things so we can present those, to those people that want to invest in our community. And I think so far it's helping, uh, because one of the other things we have and what I'm hearing is we also have a lot of businesses and a lot of projects that are already in the works. And one of my roles, although I didn't have much to do with getting them here, uh, one of my roles is to make sure they don't go away. We have currently about seven projects that we are managing that totals about seventy-eight million dollars in investment. And this will be new investment, by the way. That does not include, uh, any new, for example, we have a site visit coming in this week. That will up that up, or, or, excuse me, up the total investment package. Some of those could go down, some of them could go up even higher. But we're thinking that by the end of the month, we'll have about a hundred million dollars worth of potential investment into our community that we're working. Now, what does that mean? We've stood before you before, our organization, and gotten real excited about certain things. And, you know, a few months later, nothing was happening, no dirt was turning. And, and it's important for us to understand that the entire process takes some time. But I, I'm not saying that just to buy us time. The International Economic Development Council lists about eight different phases of the economic development process. And that could be everything from pre-development and some of the early stages, like what we're doing tomorrow with our site, or this week with our site visit, all the way through the opening of the facility, like we've seen recently in some of these great places that have come into our community. And somewhere along the line, each of these projects is stationed, and hopefully they're moving and not just stationary, but they are in one of these different phases. But our job also is to make sure that these are moving towards the finish line. And some of them have in the past few weeks and months, and, and hopefully we'll see some more announcements than what we've had so far. But even if they're not, we need to figure out why and work with the city and work with our partners throughout the community to try to make sure that we are getting them off of dead center, if you will. If they're not going to work, they're not going to work. And I'll be honest with you, some economic development prospects simply don't materialize. But we don't know until we go down that road. We have been involved with some recruitment, obviously, as I've mentioned, but we've also been involved with some existing businesses and some of the expansion that they're eager to be a part of. One of the things with our existing businesses, and I think Ashley has reported to you before, we've had roughly three hundred jobs that we can identify very quickly with just a handful of select businesses that are currently available in our community. If you have three hundred available jobs or more, it's very difficult to think that you're going to go out and get another three hundred jobs or, or three hundred job business and try to fill up those as well with our low unemployment and so forth. So it's very incumbent upon us to make sure that we fill those jobs or at least work with our businesses to try to figure that out. So one of the things that we've done is we've connected with Tarleton. Uh, that seems like the easy, low-hanging fruit. They're already here. There's a lot of folks there that would like to have jobs and some that do have jobs. But when we connect with them, and as we've been doing over the last several weeks, we found out that many of them had no idea that there were jobs available. But Mama and Daddy are saying, we need to get you a job, and so we need to make sure that we connect those folks. So we've worked with that connection opportunity. We've also worked with the College of Business, and we're creating something that I really don't have a lot of information for you right now because the school's just getting, as we all know, getting into session. We'll be visiting with those folks later on some scholar programs and some internships and other things to try to introduce and connect the several thousand students that we have at Tarleton as well as those at Ranger, as well as those even in the school district, with some of the available jobs that are here. When I say the three hundred, roughly, uh, three hundred jobs, we went and called some of these folks to see a second step. What does that equate to from an economic standpoint? That's about a ten million dollar payroll. Those aren't going to get anybody rich necessarily. Some jobs are better than others, as we all know. But ten million dollars, in addition to what we already have floating around in our community, makes Monica's number sound, Monica's number, sorry, sound even better, uh, as we go forward. So let's try to get those filled and try to see what we can do. Doesn't mean we're not going, that we're going to stop recruiting. But I think it's very important that we recognize that there are some things there that we also need to address. Uh, I mentioned the seven stages and the seventy-eight million and all of that good stuff. Uh, one of the successes, and I'm only going to hit on this briefly because I think our, our, our folks are going to be, be excited about some of the things. We've mentioned before about the Tarleton crossings. This is something that has been going on, one of those projects that's been sort of on the books for a while. And I know Mr. Barnes and I have talked about it a little bit and along with some of our other projects. And some things, it just feels like they're not moving, and they're waiting on this or waiting on that or whatever. Uh, as of this past few days, uh, the first contract was signed and agreement was made for the first phase of the Tarleton crossings to go. Just as a reminder, that is a project on Harbin Road, Harbin Drive, excuse me, that will develop into a multifaceted, diverse, uh, development, from retail to lodging to dining, et cetera. And the very first phase is with Barefoot Marketing, an existing business, as I mentioned earlier, that will get a chance to grow and almost triple their size. Add a couple of jo, add a few jobs, I don't know the exact amount at this stage, and they don't know as well, or either, uh, but it's a start. And when things like this happen, the rest gets kick-started. And this is something to celebrate. Every time somebody is going to invest in our community, we need to be celebrating and getting excited about it. And that's exactly what's happening here, because what's happening next, you'll start to see signs out there that will start to promote some of the other parcels. You'll start to see the rest of the development that's kind of been hanging in the background, start to go ahead and move forward because now it becomes a legitimate development. And so we're very excited about the Key Weyton folks, and that's the, uh, the Knute family, as well as the Cluster family, who is involved with the other, uh, project of the Barefoot Mar, Market. I may have said marketing, I apologize, Barefoot Market. They're going to be moving forward here. It'll take a few months, as we all know, as I mentioned before. We still have to do the plans. I say we, they still have to get their plans together. They still have to do architectural renderings and some of the other things. And now the site plans have changed slightly, but they're moving in the direction towards completion. And I think that's going to be very important, and I hope that you guys celebrate that. I hope that you take that as something on your watch that is happening, uh, as, and I hope that we can continue to have those kinds of announcements. One other note on that. In my role, I get to, uh, announce, sometimes be in a picture or two, sometimes be the guy that toots the horn or does whatever needs to be done, just as you guys do on, on various things. But the real heroes are the businesses. These are the guys that are investing. These are the ones that are putting their neck on the line, if you will, taking the risks and hopefully getting the rewards. Our job is to make sure that they get those rewards here in our community. So I'm very excited to be able to do that, but let's never forget that those are the heroes of our group. I mentioned the workforce a little bit, I mentioned the existing jobs and the payroll. I think some of the other things that we're doing, I wanted to mention today, and, uh, is, is, for example, our facade program. We've, we've had several announcements on our facade program. One of the changes we hope to make in this next fiscal, fiscal year is to adjust it a little bit. I think it's been a good program from the standpoint of what it's doing to certain businesses across our community. But one of the issues you have is when there's one over here and there's one over here and there's one over here, it's hard to sort of recognize what that's doing for your community. So our goal this year is to sort of target a very specific area and think about how we can improve a specific area for one fiscal year at a time. And I think that we'll see a bigger impact, even if it's the same amount of, uh, projects that get approved, we'll see a bigger impact in that specific. we'll see a bigger impact in that specific area. Now, the question you might have is, what areas first or where are you choosing? I don't know. We'll figure that out soon enough. But just know that that's sort of our goal and where we're targeting and where we're sort of funneling our vision, is to help out very specific areas and to move around the community that way. So I look forward to that. Some of the other things we're going to continue to do, look at our marketing tools and resources to see if we're reaching the people that need to be reached. You know, right now, with seven or eight projects in line, we're staying pretty busy, and that's a good sign. But that doesn't mean we're going to stop and just say, no, we're not going to accept somebody else who wants to come into our community. So we're always eager and hopeful and helpful. And if you have leads, we take them. If you guys have leads, we take them, and we'll see what we can do with them. But with that, I really don't have anything else for today. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I look forward to entertaining any questions you might have.
Questions, comments?
While you're up, I'll just make a comment. I met with Don Nichols, which is Representative Roger Williams' staff locally, represents us. And we were, I went to, down to Ford, Ford, I went to Belton and visited with him. He came here first, and I went down there. And one of the things, Ford Hood is one of the, is I think the largest military installation in America, I believe. And I think a hundred thousand, give or take, soldiers there. And then there's also families involved as well. And there's, just think of the hundreds of people every month that get processed out of the military. And so Don's going to work with both Jeff and with Chamber Commerce of July on doing some kind of a job fair, taking businesses down there. And we had an opportunity, Ashley got to visit with somebody recently that's processed out of the military. And one of the things I've found is that sometimes they're not interviewed. And so I actually took them around and visited a little bit and kind of, so maybe some tutoring and that sort of thing. So I appreciate Jeff, your wellness, and July to do that. And also, Don and Representative Williams.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, on that point, I think that's something that's very important. I didn't mention it, it's in my notes. Of course, I don't read my notes when I'm talking. But I think that's very important that we look to other populations to find out how we fill some of these roles. We mentioned that the, that the numbers are high and the available workers are low. And so we do need to look into other populations and figure out what might work for us and do some true vetting. Most of these programs already have transition folks in place, and they can help us with this and help teach us and lead us to seeing how those connections might be made. So thank you for bringing that up.
Just think of the positive side of that. Three hundred new people coming to town, you're going to be busy inspecting homes.
That's exactly right.
You know, there's going to be, there's a lot more construction opportunity, et cetera. So there's all kinds of, you know, bringing three hundred new people to town, if that's what happens, if we don't, you know, if they're thrown out of town. It's a lot of opportunity for economics in this city to improve.
Well, there is. And I'm appreciative of all the work that you do, appreciative of Ashley, who kept most of these projects running almost solely by herself and with the board, of course, who really worked hard to make sure that these folks stay in our community and continue to want to improve, not on the economic base, but improve the working conditions and working opportunities for everybody in our community. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, next time, it's consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
We approve as consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Well, that's a quick one. Mark, make the motion, and Brady seconds the motion that we approve it, consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, consent agenda is approved. Comments by city administrator?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have a list of council meetings in the month of August. It might be easier to mention the dates that we're not meeting. This Thursday at five-thirty in the training room here at City Hall, the council has a joint meeting with SEDA for a workshop. We have budget work sessions Monday, August the thirteenth at five-thirty. They may continue through Thursday, the sixteenth, as needed. The twenty-first, there's a Texas Music Friendly City Work Session. Tuesday, the twenty-first, at Melody Mountain Ranch. Public hearing on the budget and tax rates that we, that you said earlier, the twenty-third and the twenty-eighth. Regular council meeting, September the fourth. Boski River Trail Phase Two Celebration is September the sixth. There's a five-K. Just like the mayor challenged, challenged the other council members, I'm challenging staff to run the five-K. I signed up yesterday. They're going to hear about that staff tomorrow.
Stacy, call them.
The Household Hazardous Waste is Saturday, August eighteenth. That's for Stevenville residents only. You need to see Public Works for a voucher. First day of school is August twenty-second. United Way Fish Fry is August twenty-second, so you don't have to cook that night. First day of class is at Tarleton is the twenty-seventh. And we have the Downtown Farmer's Market on September first. And that's what I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mark.
Well, he's been his time looking forward. I'm going to look back a little bit. I just want to kudos out to everybody involved with the Fourth of July celebration. The man-hours that go into planning and executing an event like that are just phenomenal. And it was a great, a great day, a great celebration. So thanks to everybody involved there. I want to give a shout out to Julie Smith of the city. Couple of weeks ago, Julie and her team put together a celebration to mark the historic downtown district designation. And it was fabulously produced. There were a lot of people there. To me, that designation is a milestone for Stevenville. And I think the impact that we felt for years and years to come. So thanks, Julie, for starting a new chapter for Stevenville off with a bang. It was great. And then, Mr. Mayor, we haven't been here too long. If you'll indulge me, I'd like to tell you a story.
Tell a story.
Okay.
I'll take it to Alan's time.
Okay. So this story started last spring when a group of kids went down to the Spard office and they signed up to play some ball. And that group of kids came together as the Twelve-U Royals. The Royals had a great season in Spard League. They won their division. And that qualified them to go to the regional tournament. So the week of July fourth, the Royals and their families, they loaded up every day and they drove back and forth to Early to play in the regional tournament. They had a great tournament, won themselves a spot in the championship game for that tournament. And then they ran into a buzzsaw of a team from Ballinger. But that second-place finish at the regional tournament qualified the Royals to go on to the state tournament. So a couple of weeks ago, the Royals and their families, they loaded up again, headed in the opposite direction, and went and spent a week in Tyler playing at the state championship tournament. The Royals went in as a low seed in that tournament. No one really expected them to do well. But the boys from Stevenville had a different idea, so they won. And then they won again and again and again. And they won a spot in the state championship game. When the dust settled from that game, it was hard fought, it was well-played on both sides. Stevenville kids came up a couple of runs short. But what that means is that the second-best Twelve-U recreational baseball team in the state of Texas in twenty-eighteen is from Stevenville. And that makes the Royals champions in my eyes. So I want to congratulate every kid that put on a Royal Blue uniform and went out and played this year. You guys left it all on the field at every game, and that's exactly the way you're supposed to play. And I want to congratulate the families and the parents of the Royals, the ones that got them equipped to play, got them to the practice every day, got them to the games on time. And one other thing about those families, at the state tournament, the three guys that organized that tournament were standing around talking. Maybe somebody was listening to the conversation. And what I heard them say was, they were disappointed in the state tournament because there was not a sportsmanship trophy to hand out this year. Because hands down, if they'd had one, it would have gone to Stevenville. Not only because of the way the boys handled themselves on the field, encouraging the other teams and the other players, but for the way the Stevenville folk handled themselves in the bleachers, not being afraid to call a great play a great play, no matter who made it, or to congratulate a pitcher for a good inning or a good game, no matter what color shirt he had on. Stevenville was well-represented. And so a huge thank you out to the parents and families of the Royals for that. Before the tournament started, there were some local businesses and individuals who gave some money, donated cash for, to support the local team. That money was used to set, offset the cost of tournament play, and it was deeply appreciated. So a big thank you out to the businesses and individuals that supported the Royals this year. And then there's two other guys, two other guys that made a decision last spring to step up and step in. And to me, they epitomized the group of people that make the Spard Athletic Program work. And that's the volunteer coaches. See Jake and Tyler stepped up and volunteered to coach a baseball team. Didn't have a dog in the hunt, got no kids playing, they're just kids themselves, but they stepped up. And I can assure you, from the first moment of the first practice, right until the last pitch of the state championship game, Jake and Tyler were busy teaching those boys, coaching those boys up, and encouraging those boys. They were doing what all the Spard coaches try to do, which is create memories in a group of kids that'll last them a lifetime. And Jake and Tyler, they exceeded all expectations this year. So to the coaches, I would simply say, guys, awesome season. Your actions and attitudes on the field were reflected by every kid that put on the uniform and played for you. And they should be proud of that. My guess is that if Jake and Tyler continue to coach together, this is not the last state tournament they'll be a part of. And then to the Royal players, I would simply say, you guys had an awesome season. You bring great honor to your hometown. You are great ambassadors for Stevenville, the way that they presented themselves and the way those guys presented themselves on and off the field. It was an awesome year. Congratulations, and we're really, really proud of you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Ready?
Next Friday, August seventeenth, six P.M., we're having an amazing event that's coming into our community. It comes once a year, and this year, it's fortunate enough to be hosted by myself and Councilman Huckabee. And that alone ought to get you pretty excited about it, I think. But it is the Handsome Hunks, Ehrath County, taking place out here at the City Hall at City Limits. So of course, all proceeds go to Benefit Mills, Mills on Wheels, Ehrath County. Typically, we raise about thirty thousand dollars for Mills on Wheels. And I can assure you, after being on that board and on the budgets, that that's usually what gets them operating out of the red. And this event is very important to the local seniors in our community. I think we're probably sold out, though, as of today, but there might be a couple last-minute spots you can get. For all that have not had the privilege of opportunity to go, it's exciting. And I can assure you, with Brandon and I doing it, we've got some really good things coming. It's going to be fun. So come on out to the next Friday at six P.M.
You set the bar pretty high.
I can't wait to spend all of August with you. Very excited about this.
There you go.
So am I.
Alan?
I'm glad that our liquor's my time tomorrow because he's spending good yards, and I appreciate it.
All right, Sherry. Brandon?
I just want to say, like Jeff said, Tarleton Crossing, the first phase of that, that's a big win. And I think as a city, we need to celebrate, celebrate every win we have of growth, of diversity in our city. And I think that's a big win, so congrats. Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you to everybody who made that a part.